I have as a guest in my studio today Derrick Medved who is running for city council in the city of Duluth. Welcome Derrick.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I greatly appreciate it.
Nice to have you here. Derrick, I would like you to inform the voters. Why is it that you're running for city council? I know that you're a business person. You've got several, I hate to say gas stations, but that's old terminology, so...
Convenience stores, as we like to call them.
Okay, and you have in Duluth, you have one in Chisholm, Herman Town and Superior. So you have a variety of different venues that you work out of.
Correct, and that's the great thing about, you know, having a lot of different stores in a lot of different cities. You know, I get to operate, you know, under different city governments and understand, you know, how they operate and get to see, you know, what works for them and what doesn't work for them. So I'm very, you know, honored to have that opportunity to be in different neighborhoods throughout the community.
If we can do a comparison, and I know I asked you this before, so you know, I know the answer, but I want, I want the public to hear it. If your choice was to vote on the easiest and most easy, well, okay, the easiest to work with community as far as your business goes, which one would you say is the best out of those four?
Well, let's put it this way. They're all great, but a lot of them face different challenges. And, you know, a lot of them are more business friendly than others. And I would say Chisholm is my number one. I love Chisholm. They've always been welcoming, open arms, very easy, you know, on the process of permitting, city code, stuff like that. So that is what I would love Duluth to do is be very, you know, business friendly, improve on that, strengthen that relationship with business in our community. You look at Herman Town, very business friendly. They're all great. You know, so I don't want to knock any one of them, but I would say Chisholm, you know, is my favorite when it comes to stuff like that.
Well, I'm a business owner as well. I own a storage facility. And from the control and some of the decisions that are made on the city council, I will not purchase a property in the Duluth city area and then face all of those challenges. I commend you for being willing to do that.
Well, thank you.
I think that takes a, a person that can see maybe beyond what I see, but I just, I just, I like being out in the Rice Lake city. Don't have all these kind of regulations and whatnot that the city seems to be putting on businesses.
And that's the big thing, you know. So when I look at a different location or moving to a different location or expanding or opening a new store, you know, they've been out of Duluth currently. And I haven't really looked in Duluth at the moment at any locations because what concerns me is what's next? What's going to be the next thing? What's going to be the next thing? And so as a city council and city administration, they keep implementing different rules and regulations that can be harmful to business. And so I think for a standpoint of Duluth being appealing, it's just not there for me to, you know, move my endeavors further within the city. So that's why I branch out and move to Chisholm or Herman Town or Superior. And so we, we have a lot of great opportunity within the city, and I want to make sure that when I'm running, we talk about business climate. That is one thing I want to focus on and ensure we're going to focus on and grow and expand.
Well, my husband was in business for many years. He was in construction. And whenever he had to get a permit from the city of Duluth, it was make all these drawings for a simple porch. And so the regulations were, I would say, unreasonable. And so whenever he could get a job, and then he started refusing jobs in the city of Duluth, if he could get a job outside the city, he was happy because he could work with zoning people and, and the, like Rice Lake, which used to be a township and whatnot. And he didn't have to wait and wait for these permits that, he needed to get busy and get on the job, you know. And so that's another reason why looking at business within the city of Duluth is they do hold you up. I don't know if that's so with big business, but it sure was with small business.
And I talked a couple of days ago in front of a group of people, and I said, you know, how can we make housing work in our city by making it a more user-friendly, cost-effective operation? And that's what we need to do. And we need to encourage individuals to move to our community or build or expand within our city by making it a more cost-effective, user-friendly, you know, through city coding, through permitting, stuff like that. And that's going to be a huge thing, how we're going to grow.
And so you sound to me, since you're in that position, if you're elected on November 5th, that you would make sure that your voice was loud and clear on the fact that these departments need to be looked at and tightened up as far as the waste and the delays and whatever, whatever it is, so that business people coming into Duluth that are trying to get permits and stuff will want to further that expansion of their, perhaps their own other facilities that they have in other areas.
Well, I'll say it again and again and again. And we're doing okay. We're doing okay with how things are going, but we always can do better. And that's one thing I talk about in a lot of manager meetings with, you know, my stores. We're doing great. Things are fine, but we can always do better. And there's always that opportunity to go out, excel more and do greater things. And that's why I'm running for council, because we have every opportunity to do that, to do better. And so every department should be looked at, everything, top to bottom, we should look at making sure we're a lean, mean, running machine, and we're going to be, you know, aggressive in the future. And so that's the opportunity I have, and I want to bring to the table, bring to council, is, you know, working hard, going further.
Do you have, and I always hate to limit it to say like three, but do you want to start at the top and then work down as to what the most important issues are that you see as you have run your campaign?
Well, let's talk about infrastructure. You know, infrastructure is going to be a huge thing. Excuse me. Infrastructure is what makes a city run. We need to make sure that we have sound infrastructure, water, gas, sewer. We're not just talking about roads. Roads are important, but we need to make sure that underground, water, gas and sewer are going to be taken care of, because that is what's going to make our city successful. We can't encourage people to move here if we have failing infrastructure. So focusing on those three things, water, gas and sewer, roads, maintenance are important. And so also moving to public safety. We need to make sure that people feel safe in their communities. People will want to move here. We have a lot of drug issues, crime issues. Statistics might say that crime is down in our city, but, you know, if people don't feel safe in their homes, they just don't feel safe. And so we need to make, make sure everybody understands that. How can we improve that? We need to strengthen our DPD, our fire department, and move forward. And so perception is reality, and that's one thing I run with and talk a lot about. You know, the numbers might say one thing, but perception is reality. And then moving on to housing, we need to make sure that we're having the opportunity to allow people to move somewhere. If they want to move to Duluth, where are they going to move? And so if we want to encourage a lot of growth within our city, infrastructure, public safety, and then housing. And so giving them a place to live, a cost-effective place to live for young families, working-class families, lower-income individuals, and just as much, you know, million-dollar homes. We want to encourage everybody as a whole to move here and set up shop in Duluth and live here for a long, long time.
Well, something that I think also needs to fit in there though Derrick is jobs. I've lived here all my life. My father worked at the steel plant. I went to Danville. So I've barely been outside of Duluth living except for a few months when our son was born out in Washington State. But we've seen nothing but a backward slide from any kind of an industry. Well, we have a couple here, but, you know, I think our biggest employers are the hospitals and the universities. But there aren't job opportunities, so when people graduate from college, and we have several of those in the area.
Correct.
Where do they go to get a job that is decent paying? I mean, they can't work it. Some of the business stores around here that don't pay very good wages, or they have to have two or three or four jobs. And, and so it's like, where are these people going to go to work? And I also focus on those that are not college educated, because there are no trades or anything except into private trades businesses like your carpenters and plumbers. But there's never been any, anything in the educational system for the last several years teaching these people a trade. And if they don't want to go to college, what are they supposed to do to get a job? And what is Duluth looking at? I, I'm not paid much attention, but what are they looking at when they keep saying no to good, honest jobs that the lower people, I shouldn't say lower people, but the, the not highly educated people can obtain once they get out of high school?
Well, and that's the thing. There are jobs. And as a business owner, it's very hard to find individuals to work. And so there's a worker shortage. Is that, you know, all true? You know, I don't know. But for me, speaking from my business, there is a worker shortage. But one thing that I always rely on is you build it and they will come. And so housing is a huge thing. If we want industry to move here, if we want individuals to, you know, set up shop, move here, invest in our community, they need a place to live. And so I think that's going to be a big thing for any industry, any business owner wanting to invest in our community. They need a place for their workers to live. And so focusing on housing, creating it, you know, which will also open up a lot of doors for the trades. And so you build, you know, 75 million, 100 million dollar housing project, it's going to create a lot of jobs for the trades, you know, open up units for individuals to live in, and also encourage business to grow and thrive here. And so those are things that I really believe, you know, in that order will, can happen. And so also being a more business-friendly community is important, allowing those permitting processing processes, regulations, that'll open the floodgates. And hopefully, we can encourage a lot of great business and industry to move here.
Well, a lot of the businesses that I've seen lately, they're up at the Business Park in, I'm not sure what you call that area in particular, but it's, it's within the city limits and it's up by the airport. A lot of people that I've talked to, young people, well, they don't have a car yet. And actually, one day, a young woman was waiting outside of Walmart. And I said to her, how are you going to get home? She said, I'm going to have to walk because the last bus has gone. So some people have these jobs, like say at Walmart and some of these other outside of Duluth businesses.
Yep.
But the transportation is so erratic and poor that they hesitate to take a job simply because once they get there, when they get off, how are they going to get back home again? So if we're moving our, our businesses to the industrial park, they have that challenge as far as getting to work.
Correct.
And this young woman, she had a problem with getting, she had a job at Walmart, but getting back and forth was difficult for her. So if we're moving everything out of the center part of the city where people are living, how do they get around to get jobs? Take a cab? That's expensive.
Yep.
Is the bus transportation adequate enough in the city to accommodate outside outlying areas as well or not?
Well, we can always improve on it, I believe. And as opportunity presents itself, I think we can reallocate, you know, busing and transportation throughout our city. You know, we look out west and we have a lot of green space, a lot of great opportunity. We have the steel plant site, the cement plant site right on the bus, right on the bus line. Excuse me. But, so there's a lot of opportunity, and I heard it the other day, we're open for business. The western part of town has a lot of great, you know, tracts of land to build housing, develop business, industry. The steel plant site is going to be a very huge opportunity for anybody to hopefully develop and, you know, bring industry jobs to that community. And so we look at the cement plant site, a DETA project, a DETA site. And so, you know, we see Iconix move from West Duluth out to Gary, stayed in our community, invested in that tract of land out there. And they'll be there for many, many years. And so we can encourage business, industry to move out to the western part of town, embrace that, and really build on that. And so I think in the next couple of years, we're going to see a lot of growth and development in the western part of town, and I can't wait. And so, you know, the bus line, like I had mentioned, goes right out through Gary, through Morgan Park. So it, it fits perfectly. And I, I'm excited about that, those projects.
Well, it's good to hear that there is good bus transportation out there. I remember when I was young, my aunt would take me on the streetcars, you know, those things that used to run on electric, electric and rails down at the bottom, electric, yeah. And we would get on the streetcar and we'd go all the way down to.
And that's, you know, I, I think that's why they call it the good old days, you know, when things were simple, when city government, everybody focused on the basics. And was very proud about building great things and really, you know, being pioneers and moving forward. And so I want to get back to those times and focus on the basics. And that's a lot about what my campaign talks about. It's just getting back to the basics, focusing on what's important and moving forward.
So you would encourage manufacturing to look at Duluth as a place to employ?
I would hope so. I, I think that no matter what, no matter what sector any business, industry is in, you're going to look at Duluth. And you're going to give us an opportunity to present to you, to move here, create jobs. That's, that's huge. And so we just seem to be appealing to everybody that we're a place, we're a great place, you know. And I'm, I'm very proud to say, born and raised here, 24 years, and I plan to be here for the rest of my life. And so I'd love to see Duluth grow and prosper again.
Well, and it seems to me, when I was young, it was very prosperous on that end of the town that you're talking about. You'd go out, go past one manufacturing place after another.
Yep.
And it's virtually all gone. Everything is gone in the way of manufacturing.
Yep.
So those are the types of jobs that I'm thinking that are necessary for Duluth. Yes, we have a lot of other opportunities, but those, those are, those are jobs that people can enjoy because they're working with their hands. And a lot of people don't work as well with their brain as they do with their hands. And so that's what I'd like to see encouraged. So I'm glad to hear that you're, you're on board on that.
Correct. And we're, we're a very presentable city. We got the port, we got the rail, you know, we got the highways. We're, we're here. And I'll say it again, we're open for business. We're ready. And if we can position ourselves as a city to accommodate those changes and those businesses, it'll be great.
So, okay, you've covered a couple of your top priorities in talking about infrastructure and job opportunities and what have you. What do you see as some of the problems? I know when you talked earlier today that you think that we need more support for our police and our fire department.
Most definitely. And I think they can use all the help they can get. You know, I said one time, I'm not the professional, you know, I'm not in law enforcement. I don't know the first thing, you know, about law enforcement. They're the professionals. And so it's our job to financially support them as much as we can to fight today's challenges and really get a handle on the drug, the drug issues in our community, the crime, stuff like that, and make sure that they're fully funded to fight those challenges. And so as a city councillor, I would love to make sure our fire department and Duluth Police Department are fully funded.
Okay, well now, how do we fund things without raising taxes?
Yes.
That seems to be the only way to fund anything nowadays. I mean, current administration, for sure. So what is your, what is your thoughts? What are some of your ideas on how we're going to fund extra gear for the police department and maybe more people on staff? How are we going to fund that?
Well, I think, you know, as the city government, there's always opportunity. And any business, anybody, you know, even in a household budget, you can always pinch pennies where you need to and make sure that the things of high priority are getting addressed. And so, you know, if you have a fridge growed in your house, you know, your fridge is gone and toast, you're going to find a way to pinch those pennies and make sure you're going to cut somewhere else in your everyday budget to accommodate that. And so we really need to make sure that the priority of the police department and fire department are going to be, you know, top-notch, and they're going to be up there on our priority list. And so, you know, can we cut in administration? Of course we can. We can cut in a lot of ways in spending throughout the city. And so I'd love to dive in and study the budget even more and find ways to save. And so I currently have, and I have some cool ideas, but I'm not going to share them today at a later time.
Well, I know that another candidate that's running, listen to him say that we're top-heavy in our administration. And having been an administrator himself, he was well aware of it because he looked into it. So when you talk about cutting in administration, have you got any specific ideas that you think are necessary to look at or?
Well, I think adding positions, you know, that we don't need. You know, we have a housing position. I think housing is a very big priority in our community. But also, we have a lot of great individuals, developers within our community that we can rely on and work with as a city and save that money. You know, we have the Earn Safe and Sick Time, which is, you know, a business, you know, regulation for businesses in our community. But did we need to add a position to police that? You know, that's another 80 grand a year. And then, you know, there's just multiple positions for climate change. You know, we can definitely work with our county and our, our federal level and save that money. So there's things that definitely we can pinch pennies on by not adding positions, not, you know, increasing that overhead cost. As a business owner, you know, if I have a job or only a select amount of hours, you know, to accommodate for a certain store, you know, I can't add manpower. You know, I can't say we need to add two, three more individuals because it's not cost-effective. So how can we get the best bang for our buck in our community by not adding positions, by just, you know, working with other co-parts in our community? And that's the county, and that's the, you know, the fed. So there's ways we can, and definitely we need to, because pinching pennies is going to be how we're going to move forward as a city and be fiscally responsible.
Well, I know that there's groups of people, I won't name names right now, that are trying to look at the future of the city of Duluth. And I know that they're business people. Do you see that there's any alliances at all in the city of Duluth with business people that could be sitting down, like say a council of people, that they could give from their side as business owners to the city council, which I think another problem, and I'm not referring to you in particular, there's kind of, there's no real gray hairs on the city council, you know, people that have had experience. It's a bunch of younger people. And sometimes, younger people make decisions based on emotions rather than on experiences.
Correct.
And facts and information, which is the wrong way to make a decision.
But the one thing we need to realize is that anybody in council, it's not about a personal decision, it's not about a personal emotion. You are representing the voters, the people who voted for you.
Exactly.
And you need to realize that and understand that fully, that when you're making a decision, hopefully you're going out and consulting with business in your community if it's going to affect business. You know, we talked about the Lester Golf Course, you know, talking with golfers, meeting with the community, you know, individuals to make sure that you're hearing their voices, what are their concerns. And so it's not, you know, for me, if I were to get a place in council, it's not going to be my personal, you know, understandings or emotions. It's going to be, you know, the individuals who elected me. That's who I'm representing.
And you need to do your homework for being in an elected position.
Exactly. I never thought I'd hear that word again after high school, but homework.
Yeah, you have a lot of homework.
Doing my research. So, you know, and that's what excites me is, you know, I'm going to be representing a lot of great individuals in the community who rely on my decision-making. And, you know, I'd love to make them proud and get out there and make the, hopefully the right decision.
And listening to what they have to say and considering it before you make that choice is extremely important.
Extremely.
Because it does affect them in the long run. You had mentioned something that brought to mind another idea. And of course, my senior moment, I've forgotten it. So I think we are almost ready to wrap up here, but is there anything that you've talked about in our group that you were at just a little bit ago, or when you've been out there, when you're door-knocking and whatnot, and people bring to your attention something? Is there any of those ideas that you may not have talked about that you want to share?
Well, definitely, I think people are ready for change. They want to see change in the community. They want to see Duluth grow. And so, you know, I'll look to the camera and really, you know, the listeners are going to be the ones, the voters. And so we need to understand that if you want to see change, you need to get out and vote November 5th and vote for great candidates. Do your research, do your homework, really understand who you're voting for. And, you know, who has the best interest of growth and change in Duluth. And that's going to be the people you want to vote for. And, you know, who has a proven track record, who, you know, just find out as much as you can about them and, you know, weigh your vote on that. And so tell your friends, get out and vote, because that's going to be the biggest thing and the biggest factor in this election. People getting out and vote. And if you want your voice heard, vote. And, you know, I can't wait to see, you know, how November 5th unravels. But, you know, it's for the best. And Duluth, no matter what, will, you know, will move forward together.
Well, and I'm an election judge.
Thank you.
So I know only too well that they don't get out and vote. And of course, I always say that when I'm here in the studio, is you have a responsibility, not only to yourself, but to others. Because when you vote, you're making a choice of who's going to make the decisions that impact your life. So it's very important, especially to hear the candidate, not just to take somebody's opinion that's been written up in the newspaper, or you hear on nightly news or whatever, but to get out and listen to what the candidate has to say. So you've been door-knocking, I know that.
Been door-knocking, been lit-dropping, been having a lot of fundraisers, stuff like that. So it's exciting, meeting a lot of new people, learning a lot of new things, and just getting out there, getting my hands dirty. And that's what it's going to take, is a candidate that is willing to get their hands dirty. And I'm, I'm that guy. You know, I'll get out there. And, you know, one thing, I don't ever wear dress shirts, and my wardrobe does not really show. I have a lot of dress shirts. But I like to wear blue jeans and a baseball cap and a Senex t-shirt, you know, representing my gas station. Because no matter what, you know, no matter how the day brings, you know, I get dirty. And, you know, I get out there and work hard. And so that's what we need is councillors and everybody in the administration out there working hard for our community and doing what they say they're going to do. So, you know, hold them to that. And we have, we all have platforms, as well as myself. And make sure they're, they're getting the job done and doing the job that you elected and voted them to do. And I can say, I'll be that guy. And I'll work really hard for the community and get things done, because I love getting things done.
Well, another thing is, I think that people need to get out of their easy chairs and go on down to a few meetings, you know. There's county board meetings, there's city council and school board. And unless you go and get involved in a meeting at least, you really don't know what's going on, because you're hearing somebody else's opinion reported in the, in the news.
Exactly.
But, okay, I want to go back to your door-knocking. Has there been any one thing that people, when you allow them to feedback to you, that they're saying that is, is very important for them? Not what you already know, but I mean, have they, have they told you anything that, that is a number one factor in their staying here in this area?
Well, Duluth is home. And I think a lot of people stay here because Duluth is home. It has a lot of connections to their families, stuff like that. But, you know, as, as I hear a lot, is individuals have kids that have grown up and moved out of town, moved to the cities, moved to St. Cloud, wherever it may be. But they didn't stay here. They left, and they're raising a family out of our community. And so it makes it hard for them, traveling, going out. And so they end up staying here, but their kids, you know, and their grandkids are not here. And so it's kind of a bummer. And what we'll see is that these individuals will move eventually, and they're going to leave our community because they want to be closer to their family. So how can we keep them here? How can we make sure that their, their kids are going to move back here? And so it's jobs, you know, as you had said, it's infrastructure, it's public safety. We need the whole basket. They're not just looking for one or the other. It's the whole basket they're looking for that's going to really play a role in creating a better Duluth.
Well, I do know that many people have come back here from the big city because they don't like living there. We don't need to go into all the issues on that, but there are a variety of reasons why people are coming back here. But they've raised their children. So the grandkids are now off someplace else. And mom and grandma and grandpa didn't get a chance to see them raised unless they could go visit them. So I know that is a factor.
Yep.
But a lot of people my age are moving away Derrick, because when they retire, they're spending so much on taxes. It's not just the city of Duluth. Minnesota is a very high-tax state. So that's a factor and...
Well, I should say, that's, that's another big, a very big thing, you know, knocking on doors, is individuals can't afford anything more. They cannot afford anything more. And you know, there's a lot of individuals in our community that are, have set incomes, and they can't, they just cannot afford more. And so we need to understand that. We're going to tax them out of, in a house and home. And so how can we ensure that tax will be brought down? And that's one thing I really want to focus on.
And some people my age will come back here and stay in the warmer months because it's too hot where they stay in the winter months.
Yes.
In the summertime. But they don't own a home anymore. They are renting something or staying with other people. And so they're not putting into the community anymore, but they're still taking out of it in a sense. So there's always that, that interesting factor to look at. I don't hope to ever have to move. I'd rather stay here because this is where my roots are.
We want to keep you here for a long time, a long time.
Thank you. That's where my roots are. But it's a beautiful city. I've been in other places. But one thing that we don't have much time for is I went through Seattle. I was out there visiting and I was driving my own car. And I don't want to see our city turn into another Seattle with people living on the streets. And unfortunately, it is happening here in Duluth. And I think that's something that at another time you could go into, but it is becoming a problem here. It never was happening when I was a kid, ever.
No, and we talked a lot.
So there's no reason for it.
We talked a lot about, you know, Minneapolis and Seattle and other cities, you know, that we might pull ideas from or try to be like, you know, as, you know, the tobacco ban and this and that, Earn Safe and Sick Time. We pulled ideas from Minneapolis and didn't follow them. But one thing we need to realize about Duluth is Duluth is so unique, and we should be a pioneer. And we should not follow what other cities are doing. We should find our own ways to do them and get out there and make it happen. Because we're the pioneers. We're not Minneapolis. We are Duluth, Minnesota. And let's show them and the rest of the country what we can do. Because we have the opportunity, we have the resources, and we have a great community to back us. And so let's do it. Let's be Duluth. Let's focus on the basics, work hard, and be a pioneer. That's what it'll take.
Well, I can't say that I disagree with you.
Well, thank you. It's a side note, you know, and we talked a lot about, about party lines, you know, red or blue. And one lady did, individual did ask me, she said, are you red or blue? And I looked right at her and I said, you know what? I'm red, white, and blue. I'm pro-American, pro-Duluth. And we need to understand that. This is a nonpartisan race, and we need to keep it that way. And understand that the candidate that speaks to you the best, no matter what, if they're endorsed or not, you know, vote for them, fight for them. Whoever fits your needs the best, and that's what it's going to take. We're all in this together, and we're going to fight for a better tomorrow and a better Duluth. Redder Duluth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Derrick.
Thank you.